Engage in a new lease, and this would be for the CUNY Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, which is a new CUNY facility established by the Central Office and the Vice Chancellor for Research to provide assistance, essential services, and appropriate space for offices to startup companies created by CUNY faculty. The space that we've located is in Harlem at 215 West 125th Street, and I might say that we selected this space after we did a rather extensive search of the neighborhood. The landlord will perform all the improvements to the space specified by the university, and the university will reimburse the landlord for its share of the university requested improvements. The terms of the lease are the first five years, it's about $38 a square foot, and then the second five years is $41 a square foot.
Okay. All right. Before I open, I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
What floor on there? Because I'm familiar with that.
What floor in the building? I have to look to Al Toscano, who does all of our leasing, to ask him what floor.
Just a minute.
The floors available are the seventh floor.
Seventh floor.
Okay, okay. Are there any questions on policy item number one? Nope. Okay. So Iris, why don't we just keep going?
Sure. The second item is a five-year lease renewal for Medgarvers College, and the college has been a tenant at 1665 Bedford Avenue since the mid-2002, and the current lease expires in 2012. The building houses a bookstore and the admission service center for the college, and the current base rent is about $15 per square foot. The university and the landlord have agreed to renew the lease for a new five-year period at an annual rent not to exceed $20 per square foot, and the landlord will continue to be responsible for the real estate taxes, the exterior, the structural roof, and the interior repairs, and the university will be responsible for the cleaning of the building. The next item, which we will have a presentation on, is the master plan for Ostos Community College. I just want to, first of all, thank my staff, Megan Moore-Wilk, who's the university's chief planner, as well as Elizabeth Friedman, who is responsible for Ostos. This has been a long process for us, and I also want to thank the college for being so tolerant and cooperative in terms of working with us. We have been dealing not only with the college administration, but the faculty and all of the groups involved on the campus. We had awarded a contract to Mitchell Jurgula, who had been doing the master planning work for Ostos, and here representing the firm is Paul Brocious and John Phillips, who have both done, I would say, an excellent job on this project. And so, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'd like to take the committee through the presentation, and then if there are any questions, we can be available to answer them.
Carry on.
Great.
Thank you very much, Iris. We're very pleased to be here. We're architects, we tend to talk a lot. If you don't mind, I'm going to read from my notes, which will make it go more quickly. The master plan for Ostos is for one of the smaller colleges in the CUNY system, but it is also a young college, and it's a college in a stage of development that is both very dynamic and really exciting. So we're excited to have been a part of this. We've prepared several master plans for CUNY, and I always find it important to remind ourselves as a design team and yourselves as the stakeholders that the master plan represents a roadmap towards fulfillment of a series of goals, and those goals have been defined quite specifically for this moment in time, but inevitably they will be made changes in the future, and the plan has to be flexible in order to absorb those changes. Therefore, the key to a truly useful plan will not gather dust on a shelf, is not to be prescriptive. The tasks that were undertaken in order to accomplish the master plan focused on a comprehensive space analysis that examined existing need and the long-term need based on the projected growth of the campus, working meetings with the president, a CUNY-Ostos steering committee, a working committee, and over 75 interviews with faculty, staff, and student leadership. I must say that was a very rewarding task for us, and I think for them as well. And then finally, we made a presentation of the final plan in a community forum just a few weeks ago, and that plan seems to have been very well received, so we were pleased about that. So, a little bit of background. The college was founded in 1968, and in a former tire factory on the site of the current campus, and the campus is fortuitously located in the South Bronx on the 149th Street Cross Street, which crosses into Manhattan on the 145th Street Bridge, and it is well-located relative to City College and to Lehman College, both of which the college has very good relationships. This slide gives you a sense for the community. The college is located in these buildings along 149th Street and Grand Concourse, and the site is... That's great help. Thank you very much. It is in the thick and serves a vital role in the dynamic-growing, diverse Hispanic and African-American population of Ma'aven and Melrose, in a neighborhood that is gradually being transformed from its industrial past to the contemporary needs of the city, and Ostos will play a pivotal role in this transformation. Ostos is very well situated with respect to access and visibility, and three subway lines intersect at a station immediately beneath the campus, the two, four, and five trains, and the site fronts on 149th Street, as I said earlier, is one of the really strong connections to Manhattan and the two parts of the Southeast Bronx. And it also straddles the Grand Concourse, the iconic boulevard that connects many of the borough's institutions, its port houses, the Bronx Museum, and of course Yankee Stadium, all within 15 blocks of this site. In the 1970s, CUNY purchased an office building across the street from a converted tire factory for college use, and the first and only master plan prior to today's plan was prepared in 1984. And as a consequence of that plan, the Allied Sciences and East Academic Complex were the primary focus, and both of those buildings were completed in the early 1990s. During this period, an intermediate school and high school called the Lincoln Academy is located in the A Building, the building to the left, and these two buildings provide the resources for the college to come into its own. We'll talk about the Lincoln Academy shortly. The campus has four substantial buildings and a recently acquired site called the Carpet Building Site, containing a shell of a warehouse adjacent to a Ostos property that currently accommodates several temporary trailers. The four primary buildings total 640,000 gross square feet, or approximately 348,000 usable square feet. The buildings are in relatively good condition, but all are in need of refurbishment, reprogramming, and infrastructure upgrades. A thorough space assessment was made utilizing CUNY space standards, interviews with faculty and staff, and the goals articulated by the president and the steering committee. The student enrollment projections indicate a projected growth of 40% by the year 2020, increasing the head count from 6,200 students to approximately 8,400. The bottom line is this college will need an additional 200,000 usable square feet by the year 2020. The shortfall is evenly divided between academic space and support space. This chart shows the departmental enrollment projections indicated, based on historical trends and the academic initiatives at the college, and as you'll see here, they indicate the largest enrollment spikes will be in the areas of behavioral and social sciences, science, English, and humanities. However, extensive interviews with the academic departments and the conditions of the physical plant led us to a different conclusion in terms of space need. Due to the poor condition of science labs and obsolete lab services and technology and equipment, the most urgent need will be for improvements in the Allied Health and Natural Science programs. The large growth anticipated in humanities will ultimately be satisfied by a substantial increase in classrooms and student support space campus-wide. In addition, student support services and student-dedicated amenities and lounge space will be expanded as well. The master plan objectives. The foregoing analyses have resulted in the following specific objectives to help Ostos to meet its growth revolving mission. Obviously, the key is to address the 40% growth that's anticipated in the next 10 years. In the process, to consolidate departments and to create better adjacencies that respond to emerging academic synergies. Consolidate student services in one location in a one-stop facility, which as you are probably very familiar, is occurring on many campuses very successfully. There will also be an increase in capacity of technology and flexibility of classrooms to adapt to future need, and also to create on this campus, a sense of campus, which you'll see in a moment, is quite challenging with respect to the Grand Concourse, which moves right through the middle. It's also important to the current president to provide facilities to allow the college to play a much larger role in community outreach, and I think that sort of summarizes the So, how are we going to meet this need? The most significant impact, transformative one, like the construction of the two large buildings in the early 1990s, will be our recommendation for a new building for the Allied Health and Natural Sciences to reduce the anticipated space deficit and to create state-of-the-art labs, technology, and flexibility. Three underutilized sites, where owned by CUNY, were examined, and they're all on Walton Avenue. Two of the three sites are currently in use, and to replace them with new construction would generate undesirable logistical and economic impacts. The third site, the Carpet Building Site, not only avoids those pitfalls, but also will accommodate the largest room allowed by zoning on the three sites. The program for this building will focus on the Allied Health and Natural Sciences programs that figure large in the college curriculum. Additional classrooms and computer labs will whittle away at campus-wide shortages, and the Health and Wellness Center, closely linked to the Allied Health programs and community outreach, will be a significant part of the program. The A Building will be significantly reprogrammed. Once the obsolete science programs are relocated to the new building, and with additional space that has been gained by the relocation of the Lincoln Academy, which I mentioned earlier, that middle school has now moved out of the A Building into another board education building. This will provide the possibility to expand the library and concert with consolidated academic support functions, the creation of additional classrooms, and the reorganization of the president's office and related central administration. Along with the renovation of this building will come the potential to build a platform over the parking lot that fronts on 149th Street to create an open green space that will improve the quality of life on campus and establish substantial streetscape improvements that will increase the visibility of Ostos by means of a powerful community gesture. The B Building is currently undergoing an overall stabilization and consolidation of departments already there. The last phase of that project will include the creation of the one-stop student center mentioned earlier. This is an appropriate location for the one-stop, as the B Building is generally perceived as the front door to the college. And finally, the C, D, and G Buildings will undergo modest renovations, some reprogramming, and infrastructure improvements. The D Building, that currently houses some of the future one-stop functions, will absorb many back-office administrative functions currently randomly distributed elsewhere. After the implementation, Bailey occupants will move about the campus efficiently, new students and visitors will quickly understand the lay of the land, and wayfinding will be manageable. The implementation of the project and sequence of activities needs to be flexible, given the way funding changes over time at CUNY, and basically, as I mentioned earlier, the B Building, which is currently undergoing renovation now, when it is completed, it is using a search space, the Lincoln Academy space, and once they all move back into that building, then the A Building can be renovated, and the big change will occur when the funding is achieved and construction completed on the new science building, because once that is built, then many functions that are in these five buildings will move over into the new building, and then adaptive reuse of those spaces can occur. So there's a logic to this to minimize inconvenience to the current occupants. So, once we move outside of the buildings and look at the campus as a whole, we have an issue of circulation from building to building, because we have to cross both the Grand Concourse and Walton Avenue. We will be working on circulation from building to building as each project is developed, and the greater activity along Walton itself, as a result of the new Allied Health Building, will be acknowledged with improved connections. For example, extending the existing bridge across the Grand Concourse to Walton Avenue will be explored. Green space, opportunities to make green space improvements and streetscape improvements will be pursued, particularly along 149th Street, where the goal is to create an attractive image for the Ostos community. Hopefully, the greater importance of the college and its expansion along Walton Avenue will also inspire the Department of Parks to make improvements to the city park located to the south of the A Building. Campus identity. Currently, the primary identity is the bridge going across the Grand Concourse, which we showed you earlier, and we think that a more cohesive image will be possible once these other improvements are made, and that the four corners of the campus will begin to come into focus, and the campus as a whole will be understood as such, which will be a great benefit to all. This is the final plan of the campus. And then, an aerial view. This is the image you saw before, and what is particularly significant on this image is the new building that's proposed for the Allied Health Program on the Carpet Building Site, be an eight- or nine-story building, and will sort of enlarge the sense of the campus and give a very strong image to the place. And then, along 149th Street, you can see that the goal will be to create a strong visual presence on 149th Street, to improve the quality of the streetscape, and thereby to give Ostos an image there that it truly deserves in relationship to its importance of the community. It's interesting to note that Ostos is currently leasing a space down at this corner for the continuing education program, so that it's beginning to extend itself along 149th Street and have a big impact. And the green space that I mentioned above the parking deck would be an important contribution to a site that basically has very little green space and very little public access, and all of that would be both facilitated and legible on that site. So that completes the presentation, and happy to take any questions.
Just a short answer.
Are there any rough cost estimates for the additional $200,000 by phase, and who would we have? Hasn't been broken out yet?
It has not been broken out in detail yet, but the $200,000 per foot building today, or by the time this comes about, which will be three or four years, we hope, would be on the order of $200 to $225 million. And the improvements in renovation currently are running $400 to $500 per foot. That number will probably be moving upward, but because of the nature of the projects to be undertaken is quite varied, so depending on the funding and depending on the priorities at that time, each of the projects is relatively modest in size, so the hope is that there will be enough money flowing, but these improvements continue to be...
Will the master plan then have these budget estimates as part of the plan?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you probably said it, I just didn't catch it. Did you say that, I know that the college enrollment is expected to increase by 2020, but when is this expected to?
Be built?
Yes. I know, given the fluctuations of funding...
Open-ended question with an open-ended answer.
Open-ended, okay, okay. So in a few years.
But I know you didn't have a chance to read that space assessment chart that I went by very quickly, but it indicates that there's currently a shortfall of over 100,000 per foot, so it could not be soon enough, because that shortfall is again made up largely with these obsolete science laboratories, and in order to sort of raise the level of academic excellence, it's really important to focus on this.
Okay. Yeah. When you look at the usage by discipline, do you look at developmental skills as a separate discipline, or embedded within English and math, et cetera?
I don't know whether it's embedded. Can you answer that question?
When we look at, we go through with the full-time equivalent student numbers by discipline, and they are embedded within, and it's done by departmental, but we do look at how each campus offers... Sorry. We do look at all of the activities happening, because we do room utilization studies and so forth, to see how program is being delivered at the campus.
I guess my longer-term thought is, you know, are we, in terms of a longer-term strategy, is the plan to continue offering developmental education at the community colleges, or to outsource it in things like CUNY Start, and what impact does that have on our needs for space?
That is a question that we are debating right now, and it hasn't been finalized. But at the end of the day, whether it's CUNY Start or the regular paradigm that we use right now, the same kinds of needs are going to be there. The faculty may be somewhat different, but in terms of classroom utilization, it would still be about the same.
But in, maybe not necessarily in the same space?
I'm sorry?
Maybe not necessarily in the same space.
Yeah, but I guess by the time that we are ready to move forward, those discussions will have been completed, so we're at the initial stages right now. That's a good question.
On the non-classroom side, it is interesting how the space utilization is being developed as we move forward, and that's an integration of the library and academic support, so in terms of developmental programs, tutorials, bringing people along, there's a strong focus on consolidating all those academic support functions, and that would occur in the A Building, in place of where the intermediate school was previous.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for the presenters? May I, thank you very much. May I now invite President Matos Rodriguez to come up and say a few words, if you'd like?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chancellor. Obviously, Paul was extremely eloquent in his presentation of the work that we have done, and I want to, in a way, thank Vice Chancellor Juancho and her team for the work and the architects. It's the perfect plan for a college to grow. We have the most limited offerings in allied health of any community college when we're located in the borough where health is the largest employer, and so our capacity to grow and to do what the chancellor has been asking us, what the city and state, what the nation have been asking community colleges to do, will be really enhanced by having facilities that will allow us to expand with those programs, continue the work that we're doing with the decade of science, our dual-degree programs in connection with City College and Lehman. We need the labs to be able to match up with those efforts. Having everything in one facility would allow us to create weekend and evening programs in an efficient way. It would require just having one building open for all of that, and then the relocation of the space would allow some efficiencies, some better student support services that we, that now are scattered on the campus. So it's really, really the right plan. I want to reassure the entire board that it was done with utmost consultation, debate, transparency on the campus. Paul made a reference to the town meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, it was very, very well received. We had a meeting with elected officials and their representatives, they're very, very excited about the master plan, not just what it means for the Ostos students, but also think about the investment you'll be making in what is still the poorest congressional district in New York City and in the nation. So, you know, we think that it's the right plan to help us to move into the future. It was done right, the timing is right for us to move forward, and with your support, we'll get it done. So, thank you, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the president? Yes? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Judging from the presentation, it certainly is something that is outstanding for the institution. Many of us have been to Ostos Community College, and, you know, definitely all of the proposals are definitely needed, so we look forward to seeing...
We will help you back with making a better space.
Fantastic, fantastic. Okay, before we move on to the Hunter two, item number four, I'd like to invite Ms. Dana Sunshine for a presentation.
If I just could, maybe President Raff can join us at the table here, because she and her staff have been such an integral part of this project, both the J-RAC project, which somehow we couldn't get going, and now this very exciting project for Hunter and a new science building. So Dana Sunshine is the deputy director of our Public-Private Partnership Group, and I thought before we went through it, since it's a very complicated transaction, that Dana would take us through it.
Thank you, and thank you, Dana.
Sure. Okay. I think I used the screen. All right, so first I'm going to take you through a brief history of the Hunter Science and Health Professions Project. The project primarily grew out of Hunter's 1999 master plan, which found the current science facilities, both at Hunter's main campus at East 68th Street and their Brookdale Campus, were outdated and inefficient, and would be costly to modernize due to the age and configuration of the buildings. The project took on momentum in 2005, when the chancellor declared 2005 to 2015 to be the decade of science at CUNY. Various sites for a new Hunter Science Building have been explored over the past 10 years. To name a few, they include the 67th Street Armory, various Department of Education sites, and currently a former city sanitation garage site. Today, Hunter Science programs are dispersed across three campuses: the North Building, located on Hunter's main 68th Street campus, the Brookdale Campus, located at First Avenue and 25th Street, and the new Silverman School of Social Work and CUNY School of Public Health at 119th Street and Third Avenue. On Hunter's main 68th Street campus, the North Building was built in 1937 and houses Hunter's School of Arts and Sciences. Due to the age of the building and the demanding infrastructure requirements needed to support advanced science instruction and research, it has been determined that the building cannot be retrofitted to expand the science programs. Hunter's Brookdale Campus houses Hunter's Schools of Nursing and Health Professions. The three-building complex was completed in 1952 and is a total of 527,000 square feet... The three-building complex was completed in 1952 and is a total of 527,000 square feet, of which 100,000 square feet are utilized by the Health Professions Programs. The facilities have inefficient space configuration and mechanical constraints which do not allow for proper program delivery. Brookdale also suffers from its location. Being so far from the main campus makes it difficult for students majoring in the sciences to manage core curriculum and degree courses. The 1999 master plan recommended construction of a new science lab building for Hunter's growing programs. This new science lab building would replace obsolete labs and classrooms and would be within walking distance of the main campus. However, the neighborhood where Hunter's main campus is located has some of the most expensive real estate in the city. Finding space for the new Science and Health Professions Building required a creative solution. The site that was initially identified as the best possible solution is at East 67th Street and 2nd Avenue. It's highlighted in yellow in the images on the right side of the screen. This is the current home of six City Department of Education schools known as the Julia Richmond Education Complex, or J-RAC. J-RAC is within walking distance of the main campus, shown here in black. This proximity would have avoided duplicating key support spaces. It also would have provided Hunter Sciences with opportunities for collaboration with renowned medical and research institutions located on the Upper East Side. The public-private project involved using the Brookdale Campus site as a bargaining tool in a land swap with the Department of Education. A private developer would acquire Brookdale and build facilities for the J-RAC schools, and state funds would be used to build the new Hunter Science Building at the current J-RAC site. An RFP was issued in 2007, and CUNY began negotiations with several developers. However, in 2009, the project stalled. In addition to the many layers of complexity which made the project challenging from the start, the political climate changed, and several local groups and elected officials wavered in their support of the project. CUNY was encouraged to look at other options. In May of 2011, the New York City Economic Development Corporation issued an RFP for the redevelopment of a sanitation garage facility at 525 East 73rd Street between York and the FDR Drive. Funding for a new garage on the site had been eliminated, and the city was looking for creative ways to identify resources for a new garage. The RFP called for responses from healthcare, education, or scientific research institutions. The city preferred that the garage be developed on the site along with other uses. However, it left open the option to develop the garage off-site so long as it remained within the districts it served between 14th and 96th Streets. Memorial Sloan Kettering reached out to CUNY, and the two groups jointly responded to the RFP. The CUNY Memorial proposal includes the development of up to 1 million square feet on the East 73rd Street site and the relocation of the sanitation garage to Hunter's Brookdale site. Memorial is providing $215 million in cash to purchase the East 73rd Street site, and CUNY is providing 400,000 square feet of land at Brookdale for the relocation of the sanitation garage. At 73rd Street, Memorial plans to build up to 700,000 square feet for an outpatient cancer treatment facility, and CUNY plans to build an approximately 300,000 square feet science buil-, square foot science building for Hunter. The site will need to be rezoned to accommodate the new facilities. As part of the transaction, Hunter must vacate the Brookdale site prior to the completion of the new building in order to accommodate sanitation schedule. Temporarily, the Brookdale programs will be moved into a renovated floor at LaGuardia Community College's Center III Building. With this solution, CUNY will be maximizing its capital investment by creating space that LaGuardia will inherit once Hunter vacates for the 73rd Street site. We expect to sign a purchase and sale agreement with the city this summer. We are also in the process of negotiating an MOU with Memorial, which outlines the roles and responsibilities of each party with respect to the deal. Architects for the swing space and East 73rd Street site will be announced shortly. We expect to start design and environmental studies this summer. By 2013, we expect to complete our environmental review of the property and to enter into the public approval process seeking an upzoning of the site. By 2014, we expect to close on the acquisition of the East 73rd Street site. By 2015, Hunter's Brookdale programs will be relocated to LaGuardia. Depending on when funds are appropriated by the state for the full construction and fit-out, Hunter could be in its new building as early as 2019.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions about this proposal? Have they arrived? Oh, yes. Trust me.
I have a thousand questions, but I need time.
You got time. It's on the same schedule as the Long Island Railroad, Grand Central connection. You've got plenty of time.
Five more years, I guess. I'm just a little slow. I take, Memorial is going to provide CUNY with $250 million.
Fifteen.
Sorry?
Two hundred and fifteen million.
Two hundred and fifty, yes, I can't remember. For the acquisition of the site.
At 73rd Street, yes.
73rd Street. In return, we are swapping the Brookdale site.
We're contributing Brookdale, which has an assessed value of about $80 million.
We're contributing Brookdale.
Piece of it.
So if they move there, we have the, where does the, what happens to the garage, the truck garage? Is that going to be part of our site at 73rd?
No. The garage will now move to Brookdale. We're contributing.
So we meet the city's requirement.
It's all their obligation and their requirement. Yes, they have to do all the zoning associated with putting the garage at Brookdale. We're not involved in it. We just give them the land.
So our only responsibility is the development.
Of our own.
Of 73rd Street site to meet the needs of the School of Science and Health Services.
You got it right.
And we're going to need a lot of money.
Well, that's where I'm also thinking it out through, is what's the cost associated with that? Four?
We feel today.
Four hundred million?
Yeah. It's about, it's about $1,200 a square foot to build out science.
Build out.
Yeah.
That's finished. Four hundred, twelve hundred. That makes sense. In today's dollars. I'm sorry?
Today's dollars.
No, I don't. So what is the timeframe again, just for the 73rd Street site? I realize that Memorial's got to go south in a hurry.
Yes. Well, by 2013, we're going to, okay, we're going to complete our environmental reviews and get our public approvals, which has to do with the upzoning of the site by city planning. In 2014, we'll then be prepared to close on East 73rd Street. It'll be a partnership between Memorial Sloan Kettering and CUNY, who will close on the site. By 2015, we hope to temporarily relocate Hunter to their new facility at LaGuardia Community College, and then by 20.
That's a separate cost, am I correct?
It's a separate cost, but it's, it's covered by the capital budget. But yes, it is separate and apart from the $1,200 a square foot. We're anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of $25 to $35 million to create temporary space for Hunter. But the reason we like this scenario is because we're not wasting the money. The end of the day, when Hunter moves into their brand-new building, LaGuardia can now get a built-out floor.
Why do we have a JV with Memorial on the 73rd Street site? They maintain some interest in it?
A JV.
Did I hear you say there was a joint venture with, the agreement with Memorial on the 73rd Street site, is it JV or a?
We're each going to have our own lots, but, you know, for now, we're acting in concert with each other.
We're basically switching dirt. No, I'm with you on the swap. I misunderstood in terms of a joint venture agreement. There will be, this is the agreement.
There's going to be an MOU that we're going to engage in.
The MOU, they will have no further interest in the 73rd Street site.
They being who?
Memorial.
Well, they'll have an interest in their portion of the 73rd Street site. Remember, it's a, we're hoping to get a 10 FAR, which will give us a million square feet.
Okay, so they're going to take some of that too.
They're going to build a new outpatient cancer hospital, and we're going to build a brand-new science.
Which makes sense.
They'll have 70% of it.
Sorry?
They'll have about 70%.
They will have 70%.
Of the site.
And they're contributing 215 million to this.
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful to understand. Which is why the garage has got to go. And we're contributing the dirt at Brookdale, which is valued about 80 million. Eighty million.
Yes.
During the approximately four years, if everything goes according to plan, that the Hunter students are at LaGuardia. Since one of the downsides of Brookdale's location now is the difficulty students have in taking their core courses at 68th Street, will the plan be for them to take all of their courses over in LaGuardia? Because you're, you know, really stretching it.
Well, since, I think we have to figure that exact programming out, but, because nursing tends to, I think all the nursing will be there, but in terms of the general education and some of the general science, it, weaveling is actually going to be easier to get from Long Island City to Hunter than it often is from Brookdale. And that's one of the reasons when the Vice Chancellor was looking for space, we actually, I think she was surprised, but we said we'd actually go outside of Manhattan if it was in Long Island City. Because when you're at Hunter, you look right out the window, and there it is. So the proximity is pretty amazing. It'll be great to be with LaGuardia, and I think this idea of not wasting CUNY money on swing space to build for a sister school is pretty wonderful. And if I, if I may, just to speak to Vice Chancellor Weinfeld's comments about, Weisler Feld's comments about how long, the length of time.
That's interesting.
No, it certainly is, but on the other hand, Jeff, this is sort of, this is such a dream come true, and to be sitting here and where we're going to move towards a vote on a project that will actually give space, science space commensurate with the level of the quality of our scientists is just so extraordinary. And to build a new nursing school when we all know, and I think my colleague, Professor Matos Rodriguez, was talking about the need for more healthcare professionals, to be able to train them in a, in a facility equal to what they will contribute is truly spectacular. And the first master plan was, it was 1999, when the, with the concept that you can't keep expanding science in a 1937 building, and that there's, there was so few options. And that, we thought J-RAC was controversial, but that plan actually called for condemning, and Jay will remember this, condemning private property that was then currently being used for broadcast operations. So that was, we were going to take over a working television station by eminent domain. That was probably a little controversial. The J-RAC had its, you know, people who felt it was not the right solution. So this is building on that theory that Brookdale was, is a property that doesn't really work for us. It's not close enough, and we need something close, and why not use the value? And for Memorial, we've been, in the neighborhood, we're always showing up, competing against each other, and it's sort of a beautiful thing now that we're actually really working with each other. And they, they were very anxious against the site, but they could not coexist with a sanitation garage. They felt that to have, you know, cancer curing operations next to a sanitation facility, even with modern science, was untenable. So when we were able to make the offer to say, we can give you the place for the sanitation garage in, as Dana said, the same neighborhood, how unusual is that? If we can move uptown, it really is, as they say, a complete win-win. And as you'll see, I think in the next project we're proposing, these are incredibly important real estate deals for the college, but they actually go beyond that. So to think of Hunter being on a campus with the finest cancer care, but also finest cancer research facility in the world, we're able to be able to share science, and our students, our nurses will be able to work at the hospital, and our physical therapists, it's really important. So we're building community, and we're already in a lot of partnerships with Memorial, and this will just make it possible for our students and our faculty to be exposed more. So I just want to really thank Vice Chancellor Weinshahl and the Chancellor, and, second Vice Chancellor Dogren, for the support of what is, it's a very big idea. It's, it is a credibly complex proposal, but they're really, this is the solution, and it's not clear that there could be another. So the, so we just are so deeply emotionally grateful for everybody's support here to see if we can make this happen, because this is our future, and we have the quality to produce the talent and the research and the science that will really warrant this kind of investment in both money, but also the time that Iris and her staff, and I think Dana and Megan and Jennifer, who've all just put so much effort into making a complex project, all the pieces move forward and let, towards making it happen.
It also puts Hunter right in the center of the scientific hub in New York City.
Absolutely.
Certainly now with the Cornell Technion. The next action is with Wild Cornell to work with the faculties at Sloan Kettering. Makes Hunter a much stronger collaborative partner, and I think it has very strong benefits as well.
We had done some research when we started this project about 10 years ago, and showed that the, in terms of the investment in the United States, it's sort of the, the scientific research dollars, it was the Stanford corridor, North Carolina Triangle, and then the Upper East Side of Manhattan. So as the Chancellor said, for us to be part of that incredible research hub is only going to multiply the efforts that Hunter faculty and students are now engaged in, and can only lead to more success.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so.
Want to, want to come next item?
We can go on, yeah.
Well, as the President pointed out, the next item is an item that we had brought to the board last year when we, we were involved with Wild Cornell in terms of signing a letter of intent. And this project is that the university will be acquiring a full floor in the new Wild Cornell Medical Research Building on East 69th Street. This is an 18-story building, which is currently going up. We've, we've now finalized all of our arrangements with Wild Cornell, and we are going to move ahead with both the financing and the purchase of this built-out floor. And let me just say that, just as President Rabb said, to have our researchers in the same building with the Wild Cornell researchers, and also, this is going to ease up space in Hunter's main campus, because once these researchers move out, that will ease up space on 68th Street.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions on this policy outcome? Okay.
The next item is, it's an amendment to the pool renovation at Med Rivers College. The pool is located at the Carroll Street Building. When we started on this project, as one can imagine, the Carroll Street Building is a very old building. We were confronted with a lot of issues that we didn't anticipate, both modifications to the electrical and the mechanical system, and mostly, we, we really wanted to make sure that the women's locker room would, would comply with ADA comply, law. So the project has grown a little bit in, in costs. It's gone from 2.2 million to 3.3, so we're asking approval to proceed.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this one? Okay.
And the last item is an item for Queens College. We are going to be doing an upgrade of the fire safety and fire alarm system at a number of buildings, Collapro Hall, the Science Building, and the Music Building. And we anticipate that this project will cost approximately $6 million to do an upgrade of the system.
Any questions? Okay. I want to thank everyone involved in all of these very complex resolutions. They are, they're, they are very complex, as was mentioned, and they will be a great benefit to the City University of New York. Now, I will ask for a motion to adopt the policy.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Before you do, just a very minor correction on the resolution relating to the East 73rd Street property. If you go to that resolution under explanation, in the first paragraph at the bottom of the page, just two, two very small corrections. On the next to last line that begins to serve, it should say the schools, plural, not the schools, of nursing and health professions.
Oh, okay.
And we should delete upper level. Most of the courses will be upper level, but not all of them. And so it should read, and science classes and laboratories.
Science classes.
And laboratories. Those are the only changes.
Those are friendly amendments.
Yes, very friendly. Okay.
If we can deem them amended, since I don't have the power to ask for a motion.
Well, I will ask for a motion.
Motion for what?
To.
To amend.
To amend the resolution as indicated. All those in favor? Okay. Opposed, extensions? Okay. That is amended. And now, a motion to move these items, these policy calendar items, forward to the full board.
So moved.
All those in favor?
All right.
Objections, extensions? And so it will be done. And this meeting is adjourned.
No, can't you, don't we have new business? This is committee, right?
Yes.
Can we not ask questions, Madam Chair? I don't want to, I don't know the procedures.
I thought, I thought I offered questions.
Okay.
Okay.
I have four questions for Vice Chancellor. If, if these are acceptable, and only if they're acceptable, what is the status of the 80th Street and 42nd Street transaction? the 80th Street and 42nd Street transaction?
We have finalized all of our agreements with the DIRST organization. Those papers, as you know, because it's a lease, has to be approved up in Albany by both the AG and the controller. We have approval from the AG. We have some last items to, to work out with the controller. We are hoping that by December, we'll be in our new space at 42nd Street.
So you have a value, praise value on this, and that's, this building is for sale, right, this property?
It will be for sale. We have not yet.
It is not for sale as yet.
We have not yet put it up for sale.
But we know approximately how much we can get for it.
I think I would rather.
Okay. No, you don't have to tell me. You have to say.
We have a, we have a range that we think we can get for the building.
Time is our friend here.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Time is our friend here.
Why?
Because the, I think in this area, the market is really starting to heat up.
Okay. My second question, if it's not out of line, is the status of the street closing at Med Rivers College? Is that something we shouldn't be discussing?
We're working on it.
Okay, that's all I need. How about the LaGuardia Community College Hotel study? What's the status on that?
Working on that, too.
Okay.
No, it's true.
We've designated it with something, Cushman and Wegfield, who will be working with us on putting together the RFP that'll go to the market.
You're going to go, if the feasibility, if the study is feasible, then you go to the market?
Go to the market and see if there's a developed would like to be our partner.
Okay, and the last question is the status of the new community college development process.
That is in its very early stages of discussions with DOB and others.
I'm sorry, with?
With, you're talking about North Hall.
No.
No, no.
No, I'm talking about the development of a new community college.
It's opening in September.
Oh, well, it's, it's done. We're, we're opening for business in September 2012.
And I'm sorry, I'm not being clear, the development of a new facility for the.
She's talking about North Hall.
You're talking about North Hall.
He's talking about North Hall.
North Hall is the building that is.
North Hall.
North Hall is the building that was vacated in the process of.
You're talking about 10th Avenue and 60th Street.
At for John J. College.
And the status of North Hall.
And the idea is to develop that, that site. We will reduce that site.
Be a public partnership, as I recall.
Absolutely, and we will be discussing, looking for a partner to develop that jointly with the.
And the last time I heard, we were going to develop an RFP to go to the street.
Yes, but we're not, we're not there yet.
It's a little early.
As the Chancellor said, we are in conversations with DOB.
We want to, we want to put that, that asset on our balance sheet.
Got you. I'm with you there. Okay.
Do you have one more?
Sorry.
Does that?
This is the only place we get to talk, I think.
All right. Are there any other questions? And hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.